Simcoe County Council has been unable to reach a solution on waste management. Even as health concerns grow around the county's last remaining landfill. The Oro facility, Simcoe's largest and final active site, is projected to reach capacity by 2027. And across Ontario, the province as a whole has fewer than nine years of landfill capacity left. At the August Simcoe County Council meeting, the debate focused on how to increase diversion rates from landfill. The original motion introduced by councillors Rossan and Greenlaw sought to adopt Stop's recommended option one, which is garbage carts would only be collected if residents also set out their organics cart. Speaking exclusively to Simcoe community media, the mayor of Penitent Anglician urged urgent action and collaboration on the matter. He expressed support for requiring residents to use green bins in order for their garbage to be collected.
And I talk to people all the time who don't know that our landfill situation is the way it is. And this is going to cost us all, whether we, whether we build, you know, some people are talking about incineration. Some people talk about trucking it somewhere else. It doesn't matter what option you look at, it all comes at a cost. And I think the easiest path we can look at right now is educate, educate, educate. As a county council, we've asked our staff to do more education and media and, and provide the information to our citizens.
Stop explained that nearly half of the material still going to landfill is organic waste. That diversion rates have stalled at around sixty-five percent. And the previous educational campaign have not meaningfully shifted behaviour.
And what we found is that the county diversion rates remain flat, continuing to hover around sixty-five percent. The forty, forty-six percent of what's in the curbside garbage stream is organics and offers the greatest potential for higher diversion. And twenty-five percent of service units do not use the organics cart at all. Council in the past has shown a strong inclination to increase waste diversion from disposal benefiting the environment. And I would say that even, I believe it was last year, the county CCAP plan states that to decrease emissions due to garbage disposal, the county should consider increasing the organics capture rate from our current fifty-four percent to ninety-five percent by 2050.
They outlined six options for council's consideration. First option is to collect garbage only if organics are also set out, which is also Stop's recommendation. Option two, targeted education and technology. Option three, higher curbside enforcement. Option four, expanded countrywide education. Option five, monthly garbage collection. And option six is the status quo. Supporters of option one, including councillor Evans and warden Clark, argued that it would provide the strongest incentive to change behaviour and normalise organics participation.
I will support option one. Now, when I talk to folks on this issue, as soon as you mention any kind of change, they're absolutely opposed. No, we don't want any change. That was the same when we went to the large garbage containers, but now everybody loves them. But when you continue the conversation, should we be trying to reduce our garbage? Absolutely. Should we be trying to get more organics out of the garbage? Absolutely. Should we change? No! It's because people don't like change, but they want to see us move the needle. And I truly believe that. And I'm also a supporter of option five, going to once a month. But I think the time to discuss that is when we're in negotiations with the contractor, when this contract runs out. I don't think now is the time to bring that one to the table. But this is the one that will give us the most bang and move the needle the farthest. So I think that's what folks want to see. They don't want to see change, but they want to see us improve. This is what will improve the most and, and I'm willing to support that option going forward.
Opponents countered that the approach was punitive, costly to enforce and unfair to seasonal residents and backyard composters. Several councillors raised concerns about illegal dumping and questioned whether the policy would actually extend landfill life. Others leaned towards maintaining the status quo with renewed education efforts and favoured option four, which focused on more widespread education and promotion.
I am absolutely opposed to option one. I am status quo option six. I, I like councillor Snell's idea about reward versus punitive actions. I mean, I can tell you that we did a study after our last change to the waste. We in Bradford, it equates to four ETFs in our community picking up garbage. Our one resident group went out in one of the wards and picked up over seventy bags of garbage out of ditches and areas that people are just throwing it. I, we for a while had somebody throwing diapers on our eighth line for a long time that we had to go and pick up. It was just, it, it just puts the onus back on us to go pick up garbage. People are not going to be happy.
Forty percent of our residents are seized. Putting out an organic bin with their garbage in order to get the garbage picked up, it's not always going to work for them. And, and they, they have expressed that quite feverishly with me. I think the opportunity still exists with the forty-six percent of organics that are going in curbside waste. That's the capture we need to go after. Going after those that choose not to participate. I, I think all we're going to hear and continue to get is backlash, dirty road, people just chucking their garbage wherever. We see it when we make changes.
After extended debate, council rejected option one. Instead, they passed a compromise motion to receive the Stop report. Stop were directed to return with further details on option four, which involves expanded countywide education, including projected cost and possible marketing approaches. Following is the interview and meeting coverage.
And next is solid waste management, item twenty-nine, twenty-nine point one. I'm going to turn it over to Jim Elliot. But I just wanted to comment first that there is a scheduled confidential schedule two to the report. So if anybody wants to talk about that report, we'll, I'll pass it back to the warden to go in close session for that discussion of just, just that schedule two. There is no new information on schedule two. It is the same information that you saw on June twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth or whenever we were last together. So now turn it over to Jim Elliot.
Thank you Chair Dolan. And just to remind the rest of council, this is not a new item. This has been before council at the last meeting, it was deferred. So the report has not changed. There's no new content in the report. So we're, we do not plan to, to go through our presentation again. This is staff recommendation to increase our organics capture. And with that though, sorry Director McCullough, does want to have a moment to just make a few comments about the program as well before it's opened up to the floor. So if I can pass it over to Rob McCullough, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you Chair Dolan, wanted to express at the beginning, the staff respects council's decision on this. But I wanted to summarize in lieu of re-presenting the whole rigmarole we went through last time, just briefly go through why the report has a recommendation that it does. And to start out with, the reports here before you today for various reasons, including you requested it. So we brought a report early part of this year, I believe March, in, on the waste tonnages and audit reports that we achieved in 2024. And what we found is that the county diversion rates remain flat, continuing to hover around sixty-five percent. The forty, forty-six percent of what's in the curbside garbage stream is organics and offers the greatest potential for higher diversion. And twenty-five percent of service units do not use the organics cart at all. Council in the past has shown a strong inclination to increase waste diversion from disposal benefiting the environment. And I would say that even, I believe it was last year, the county CCAP plan states that to decrease emissions due to garbage disposal, the county should consider increasing the organics capture rate from our current fifty-four percent to ninety-five percent by 2050. Our initiative last year substantially increased our promotion and education expenditures for organics diversion to try and increase that diversion, but really there was only a small increase of a few tons for that whole year of 2024. Actually, we increased the amount of units by, by a higher percentage. So staff put that report together that's before you today with options to increase the organics diversion for your consideration. We recommended option one, which is garbage collection would only occur at a unit that has an organics cart out for collection as well. Because what we saw over the last year is education alone does not move the mark enough when it comes to increasing organics capture. We will always do a promotion and education program. I'm not saying we won't, but significantly increasing the budget did not see a similar increase in the tonnage. Policy change is a proven way to increase organics capture, as we saw when we went to every other week garbage collection. And option one is the least impactful financially and the most likely to have the highest increase in organics diversion. As with any change, there will be opposition both last year and this year. We've seen various communications come back, but the major one we've seen is with regard to backyard composting. And we continue to recommend and support home backyard composting. But by weight, only half of what can go in your backyard composting or, or what you produce can go in your backyard composting. The other half really does need to go into the organics. And by not doing that, that means materials like dairy products, greases, fats, meat bones, fish, shellfish, nuts and shells, cooked food, paper tissues, towels, plates, cups, wax paper, parchment paper, popcorn bags, egg curtains, popsicle sticks, toothpicks, chopsticks, sawdust, dryer lint, pet waste, hair and feathers would, would be going into the garbage instead of going into the organics. Some residents have noted we don't, they don't have enough waste to put the organics at. We're not requiring an amount right now in organics curbside. And basically this means twenty-six times a year you would have to put organics out to get garbage collection. It's not every week that we're looking. It's only when garbage collection is occurring. And if some residents don't generate garbage except to put it out once a month, then you only need to put out the organics cart at once a month. We continue to recommend to put organics out on a weekly basis to cut down on the negatives that can come with it if organics are stored longer. So basically we presented in this report to you, six options. The first one I'm just going over is the recommended option, garbage collected only with organics. Option two, a more significant targeted promotion and education, which would include a technology component. And that's what confidential schedule two is dealing with. Number three was higher enforcement curbside. Option four is just an, an increased promotion, education package to the whole county. Option five was changing garbage to every four weeks. And option six was status quo. And with that, I turn it back to you Chair Dolan. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this report? I would just like to say that the first, I was the one to ask for the deferral because it was a joint committee and council meeting at the end of June. I wanted time to be, for residents to be able to get back to us and, and provide comments so that it wouldn't be, you know, rushed through. And so that's, that's why it's back to us now. Councillor Misscimmings.
Thank you Chair, through you. Said it before, I'm going to say it again. And this time I've had resident feedback. So I appreciate Chair Dolan asking for us to defer it till now so we can get out to our constituents and, and pose the question to them. In Tiny, and I am going to speak about Tiny because those are the residents that engaged with me. Forty percent of our residents are seized. Putting out an organic bin with their garbage in order to get the garbage picked up, it's not always going to work for them. And, and they, they have expressed that quite feverishly with me. I think the opportunity still exists with the forty-six percent of organics that are going in curbside waste. That's the capture we need to go after. Going after those that choose not to participate. I, I think all we're going to hear and continue to get is backlash, dirty road, people just chucking their garbage wherever. We see it when we make changes. I don't think this is the right approach right now. I think we can continue to do more and better education. And I know you guys have done an outstanding job in getting that message out when we, when we talked about this last year. You tried some new things. I think one of the opportunities is around NIMBYs. We don't want more landfill sites anywhere in Simcoe. And I think that is the, the turning point that we can capture and not to say it's scare tactics. But the truth exists that we are soon going to be out of space and that garbage needs to go somewhere. So the opportunity with organics still exists. Forty-six percent in black garbage bags is huge. That's the opportunity that we need to, we need to seize. And we need to think about how do we educate and get that stuff into the green bin. And I think by forcing the hand and, and coming down heavy-handed on our residents is not the, is not the solution. So I am not going to vote in favour of green and black going out at the same time in order to have your garbage connected. But I will vote in favour for increased education. Thank you.
Councillor, sorry, I could not get off of mute. I, yeah, I have you, I have everybody on a list here. So I'll go next to councillors now. I have you councillor McDonald.
Thank you Chair, through you. If, if many may recall, I spoke in favour of this last time when it came up for discussion. I felt that, you know, change is uncomfortable for all of us and, but we've adapted to our recycling shopping bags as an example. But I appreciate Chair Dolan's request as councillor Meniscus mentioned as well, to, to take a pause to be able to have conversations. And I have with my fellow councillors at my lower tier municipality and some residents. And unquestionably, their feedback is not in favour. Much like Tiny, Wasaga Beach has a strong predominance of seasonal weekender residents. And there's lots of concern around community beautification, you know, garbage being left out, spreading around. Lots of, lots of issues. So, so I'm not sure that I can vote in favour based on that feedback at this time for the recommendation. Just a question to staff, have we considered any kind of rewarding opportunity versus penalising for, for lack of participation? You know, I just consider the fact that we have over half a million here in Simcoe County. And perhaps there might be a corporate partner like Kenny and Tyre, for example, that would love a marketing collab with us where, where residents get the opportunity to get a gift card or something if they consistently participate, just spitballing ideas. But has a reward system been considered versus a penalisation to increase participation?
Director McCullough?
Yes, thank you. And through you Chair Dolan, we have actually run a program like that in the past. It didn't result in a significant change. We had sort of a gold star program, which rewarded people that the contractors felt were doing a great job by consistently having organics out. We also had a, a program where people would tell us their stories and would be entered into a draw. And we did work with local businesses for sort of gift cards and that sort of thing. So it was a feel-good program. It certainly got it talked about in the media a little bit. I don't think it really moved anyone that was against the program or, or not participating in the program into the program. We, we don't have hard numbers on that, but I can say from our tonnages, we didn't have a significant adjustment when we did run those programs. We don't have the technology to be able to deter, without looking at something like option two, to determine exactly who is participating on a week in, week out basis and be able to get some sort of result that says forty-eight out of fifty-two weeks, they had their organic spins out. And that, that is unfortunately very expensive to be able to gather that. So that would be a hurdle that would have to be overcome to look at that sort of program.
Just as a supplementary, if I could Chair Dolan. How long ago was that, was that program activated? Do you recall just even ballpark?
I, I think the one where we did, it was maybe four or five years ago where we did the, the draw to, to reward those people who are doing a good job. The Gold Star Program was a significant, maybe ten, ten to twelve years ago, I would say.
Okay, just as a, an afterthought, you know, obviously technology and marketing has changed considerably in even the last two years, you know, in terms of algorithms and being able to get into people's reels. So just to put it out there, maybe to reconsider revisiting that program to see if it might change your results based on the marketing tools, technology now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Measures.
All right. Thank you. Thank you Chair Dolan. I, I have to say I was disappointed back at the last time we met when this report first appeared in our agenda. As a result, it did not bring forward any significant changes other than those that we had discussed back in March or even earlier. However, this report now with us in, given an opportunity to discuss with some members of our council as well as members of my neighborhood. I had a conversation with a few members in my own neighborhood about this. And I must say that people are using their green bins. Many people are using their own backyard composting. And as a result, many people do not put out their green bin because there's a one single bag in the bottom of the bin. And so I think they can, they can stand for it to wait for two more weeks. And as you mentioned, Mr McCullough, the, the negative aspects of storing organics, you know, during the winter months, they can deal with it because frankly, it just gets frozen. Nevertheless, I still stick by the message that, that I believe we are providing a service to our residents. It is a, considered a hard service, which is the waste collection and dealing with all of our waste, whether it be organics or recycling or waste. Managing waste sites is a, is a hard service that all municipalities do. And so as a result, we have this great county of Simcoe that has a very good cooperative and collaborative, you know, delivery of this waste program. And I really disagree with the idea that we will not collect waste if they do not put out a, an organic spin. Right from the start, when we have this, had this debate council, that that's, it just seems, it just seems wrong because that's not the type of program that we should be delivering. We need to, to face the facts that it is a hard service that we have to run. It is expensive for sure. It's part of our tax system. And, and we do the very best we can to deliver efficient and effective services. And organics collection is, is part of that. It's, it's frankly, it's, it's only going to get better if there's a change in the culture of the people who are using it. And, you know, when you ask society to change their culture in a lot of things, whether it be wearing seat belts or, you know, people smoking or any of these type of cultural activities, it takes a while. It really does. And I would encourage, encourage us to continue to keep the messaging up. Perhaps ask our neighboring districts and counties and regions to join forces and try to increase this messaging right across the province. And perhaps even reach out, as councillor Snell suggested, to, to other corporate entities that may want to jump on the bandwagon and help us with that. So there's no way I can support this, Madam Chair, as is delivered. Councillor Misscimmings did indicate about the education program. If that's brought forward as an option, I may support that. At this time, I cannot support option one. As I said, we were looking at the same program that we already turned down once. And I think this is another example of where we need to really think outside the box and find some better solutions to this. Or simply turn the page on the fact that we have to deliver a hard service. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McDonald.
Thank you Chair Dolan. I do agree with option one, other than I struggle with them not, them having to put out their green bin if there's not, if it's not full. But I did, I did learn a lot about some of my residents of what their knowledge is and what it isn't. And I appreciate the, the graph that was made for what you can put in your green bin, what you can't put in your, your backyard cycling. So, so I did it in a reverse way. So I asked them, because some of my residents, they have their own composting in the back. And I said, oh, where do you put, say I put the lint, the dryer lint, automatic in my garbage. Like most of the things that we have, that we would never have ever thought that they would be allowed to go into our composting even in our own organic green bin. There's just not enough. And it's not, I want to make sure everyone knows that it's not what our staff is not doing. It's just that somehow in the lists of everything that we put out there, they're just not getting what goes where and what, and, and why it shouldn't go in. I would love to have this graph duplicated, but more so why you're not being able to put those like you're, you're not allowed to put dairy, you're not allowed to put nuts, you're not allowed to put grease or anything in your backyard one. Because that is where they struggle with, because we do have a lot of people that use that. I, I don't know what the answer is to not, to penalize. I, the big worry for the residents, even the ones that are doing green bin, is that garbage will be left all over the place. They'll just screw it out. I mean, even sometimes out of laziness, they have garbage and they miss the day, they'll go and throw it out. So, so when you're not going to be picking up their garbage, they're not going to be able to hoard that garbage, especially in summer. And I always say your garbage should never have a smell if you're doing your, your organics and you're doing your, your recycling correctly. There is little to, there shouldn't, there just shouldn't be. So I would like more of this. And then even if we had those things out, and then, and then it's up to us as municipalities to get that message out. We put out messages from the county, it goes on the TV, it goes on the radio, but we can reach our, our own residents, whether it's through a newsletter, whether it's whatever way it is, and through your libraries, through your very high traffic stores, put these things in and have them give them out. Because I think that they will actually heed to some of this, knowing that they can get all of that stuck into their, into their green organics. And I just want to applaud our own staff on the great job that they do and, and come up with these ideas. And so we are one of the, I, I do live in Essa, but I also have a cottage in Ramair. So we're one of the seasonals up there, but we still do the same thing. And it's only to do with what you get used to doing. And change is never good because it, you're transporting this stuff back and forth or if they don't have a place to put it. So I, I would caution everyone that we do need to do something. What it'll be and what will the change will be today to the, to option one. Because as all we, as we all know, we are not going to have spaces left. So I agree, I'm just, I'm struggling with, you know, the ones that don't have enough to put out so they're not going to track it all the way down, especially long, like rural where they have very long driveways. Older people struggling with the, the going out and carting an empty one or a semi-empty one out. I have, I, so I just hope that we can find a, an area where we can actually drill home what the importance of this is. And I, so again, if you, if you would through, Rob, your department, put out something. But it can't just be, you can put this in and you can't put this. You have to tell them why that stuff can't go in their, their own composting at the back. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you councillor McDonald. Councillor Evans?
Thank you very much Chair. I'll try to be as brief as I can and not add more garbage to the garbage discussion. But I'll just start a quick little story. I mentioned about governance the other day. I was driving back through Bradford and then through West Gwynneberley last week during garbage day. And you drive through East Gwynnebury and there's GIP trucks with two people heaving garbage bags and crap laying all over everybody's front lawn. So first of all, this is a reflection of council and staff and everybody. The difference is jarring, sorry garbage refers, that, you know, this program is working. And if you drive into West Gwynnebury and you saw the recycling bins out and it's clean, there's not crap all over the place. And, and I think it's a really good program. And I gotta think it's cheaper than having two people on a truck. My look at this is that, you know, long term, I think we're doing a good job. And, and I think when I look at the two bins on the side of the street, when I'm talking to my, my residents and to get their impacts by it, direct and indirect, I'd like to see the recycling bin become the garbage bin. I.e. the garbage bin should be really small. A lot of people tell me, oh yeah, no, I don't have much garbage. And I'm like, okay, well, so that's kind of where we're going. We want to encourage people to put bigger bin for the, for the recycling and smaller bin for the garbage and change that societal behavior, that transition. It's kind of like kids with bike helmets. I never wore a bike helmet, but you educate and you keep moving. And now everybody wears bike helmets, even me sometimes. So as I mentioned in past meetings, I do not believe in punitive measures. I, I think there's a number of logistical problems with this in terms of putting our drivers as enforcement people, in terms of the number of pickups that you're going to have now and the time associated with that. I think there's just, it's not a clean program right now. And we need to provide an opportunity for people to get honey, not, not vinegar, and be able to, to buy into the program. And I'll just, I'll end on this. The one initiative I had, or one, one area that seemed to come up in terms of people like, do you do? like, do you do your recycling bin? And one of the main reasons people did it, because their neighbors did. They go, oh yeah, everybody in my street does it. Oh, I better do it, or someone will not look, they might not, you know, I'm not putting my bin out. And I think it's something we haven't mentioned before, but there's a whole, you know, my neighbors are doing it, so I better do it, so I don't look back. If that's the reason or one way we can do it, and I don't honestly think it's much different than the bike helmet thing, everybody's doing it, everybody changes their behavior slowly. I think that that's, that's the way to go. So I, I can't support number one in terms of punitive, but I don't want it to be an either or. I think we're doing good stuff. We are really are. And, and it's just a matter now of a consistent, focused and, you know, program of identifying with the raccoons, I'm sorry, I don't know their names, I can't remember their names now, but that type of idea where, you know, we start with different demographic groups and say, this is what does go in your recycle bin. You can put dog poop and recyclable bags in your, you know, your recycling bin and save on garbage. And then appeal to people's better and more holistic and more beneficial backgrounds and their, and their beliefs than, than trying to come up and say, you don't do this, there's, you're in trouble. And I think the program's too successful to now start putting what I see is kind of a bit of a roadblock. And we're now, we're starting to cut our, to cut our own selves up and I, and I don't want to see it go that way. So thank you, Chair. That's my comments on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Director McCullough, can you just walk us back a bit? Like just, so this report came forward, we said, no, do more education. So we did that, we did more education, we came back and we said, we did the education, it didn't move the dial. And then council recommended bringing this back. Is that, can you just walk me through that?
Yeah, through you, councillor Dolan. Yeah, you've, you've, your memory's 100%. So we, I believe in 23 identified this essentially on option one as a possible way that we could look at changing our sta, our stalled diversion rate, because we know how much organics is in the, is in the garbage. We, we did a great job before that. We went to every other week garbage. That changed things, but since we made that swap four, five years ago now, nothing's really changed. In fact, what we're seeing is a slight decline when you consider growth as part of it. Our tonnages have been fairly similar. So we, we brought the report to council, there was a, a very close vote. And in fact, it went in favor of implementing at committee. And when it came back to council, it flipped again because some of the reach out that probably happened this time as well. We didn't bring it back up then, except we did bring a report back to council that showed a waste audit, which we did in-house and had invited councillors to come and see the amount of materials that we were doing and how we did it. And I think those councillors that took advantage were surprised with the amount of gar, of organics that they were seeing in, in the garbage. We did some interesting look at the numbers. If, if you recall, one of the things that's in the report, and I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I believe it was somewhere around the, the, the people that weren't participating in organics, including those that use a backyard composter, but still don't sort out the other material. Those people that generated garbage only and nor organ, no organics were actually 75% by weight higher than residents in garbage that didn't. And I, I think because of those and those other stats I mentioned earlier, that we still see the major component in the garbage bin is actually organics, not garbage, they're by, by a significant factor. That council wanted us to say, well, maybe we should look at that again and, you know, let's look at what options are available to us. So that's why staff came back with the report that looked at more options than we looked at previously and wanted to provide that to council as council was a little worried about the, the stats we were seeing at the time. At least that's the, the, the information we got as staff from the, the council meeting. And that's why we brought it back to you. We will always do, and I, I like some of the ideas that are, have been thrown around here, and we will always be working with promotion and education, just because that's not part of the status quo. That's something that we always do. We always are looking at new promotion and education ideas. And we need to determine what council's direction is here before we can come up with that, that new, that new approach. Because obviously our promotion education program is going to be geared towards the selected option, even if that selected option is status quo.
Thank you, Director. Councillor Cox?
So far Severn does have a lot of residents part-time. And we also have an issue with people who camp and they go along and they park it at the end of someone's driveway and those people have already gone home. But we have, we have different issues, same issues, but different. The other one, when, when we first started this whole program, the, the education was very community geared. Your group came to fairs, events, they told everybody, they got everybody keen on it. They worked schools, they got them all keen on it. And I think that was great, but I think it's done a slump. And I just think that if organics are the big thing that you want to increase, then you're not only going to tell people what to put in the organics, you're going to tell people what to put in garbage. I'm constantly seeing styrofoam. I mean, and, and things that, you know, that's not garbage. We, we all know that and it's just, it's garbage, but it shouldn't be, but we can't go there. Anyway, I think, I think that those, I think we need to get back to the fact of using something which everybody has already said, education and utilizing the fact that our biggest one is organics. I talked to so many people about this. Organics are gross. There's bugs and there's worms and smells and, and I'm sorry, Sandy, but you know what? My garbage sometimes smells because sometimes I don't, somebody in my house doesn't always wash everything off, the meat things. But hey, that's the way it is. But I think those types of things are the things we have to look at. And I, I think it will work. And I think township's communication staff can help out. I think there's a lot of people who can help, but it's already been said. But we need to go at it in a different way. I, I think that we, we've, we've done it. And I even have people, which I was very surprised about, who said, well, it only saves 130,000 a year. They actually like read the report and listened. And their thing was, well, you go through all that and you start telling people what to do and that's it? I'm like, oh, well, hey, you know, if you've read the report, I think that's very excellent that you're paying attention. So I, I believe that we need to go ahead with more education and it needs to be a little more like we did at the beginning with some really innovative and exciting things to do and going, and I really believe going to events is a big one. Like look at all the events that happen in Simcoe County and people are there. They just need to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brian Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I just want to start by saying I'm, I'm so happy that councillor Evan wears his helmet A couple of things, you know, in Wasaga Beach, we have as high as 30%, sometimes even higher, depending on, on the week or weekend in Wasaga Beach in the summer that are, are, you know, short-term residents. And, and, you know, our concern, my concern here in speaking to several of our residents, because garbage just isn't a hot topic here at this table. It's, you, you know, get in a room and bring up the, the subject of garbage and, and waste management. And I think you'd be really surprised how many people want to chat about it, which is a good thing. So there's a few things, I mean, other than us worrying or me being worried about, you know, if, if these garbage cans aren't picked up. And because they are often part-time residents or visitors, they are probably not separating very well. And so now we've got garbage sitting on the side of the street in cans that is just, you know, doing its thing, which is never pleasant. And then you get the animals and cats and rats and elephants and whatever else. So I, I really can't support that we won't pick up garbage if a green bin isn't out. But here's what I hear from my residents in Wasaga Beach. Number one is with respect to the blue bin, can residents get a second or third blue bin? And I hear this from families who have, you know, three or four kids where a blue bin every other week is not enough. And so because of that, they end up then they've got to put it somewhere. So now the blue bin's full, it goes into the garbage. And I say, you know, you can get clear bags and blue bags, but again, if it's not easy or it costs more, the answer always, why should I have to pay more? I'm already paying for this service. So can, can they get more blue bins? Number two, with respect to the green bin, question I often hear is, why do we have to use these special bags? They're expensive, it's a pain. Why can we not just put product in the blue bin? We realize we'll have to clean out or wash out our blue bins every so often, but it's easier. And, and I guess what I'm getting at here is, the easier we make it for people, I think the better chance people are going to use the system. The more difficult it is or more costly it is, the less chance people are going to use the system. And then of course, we've got quite a few seniors in Wasaga Beach who struggle already to get one bin to the curb, never mind two, especially in the wintertime. And so I think we've really got to consider that. I, I want to commend staff because I think we, I think the county of Simcoe and Rob and his team have done a phenomenal job at waste diversion, period. We can always do better, we know that. And what I also believe is that although we may not have seen a big uptick, if at all, with respect to the education around the green bin, I agree with many of my other colleagues where sometimes education takes time. And, and I'm not sure that we've given it enough time. So although I understand how important it is, I think that, you know, we, we really do have to find ways not only to educate more and maybe better, but make it as seamless and as easy for people to do as possible. Things that are difficult, people tend not to, to participate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Smith, councillor Lebois, and then councillor Norcross.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the other speakers and to staff in particular. From the way I see it, there, we are running on a landfill. There's a demonstrated cost savings and there's a positive greenhouse gas effect. All things that we have identified as strategic initiatives. And so I would be in support of option one. If, if the parties want to delay that to a more convenient time, so maybe the seasonal residents aren't in play, that might be helpful. I think that the city of Toronto did that when they, when they outlawed smoking in bars. That, that seemed to work. And if there wants to be further education, that's good as well. And I'd like to call for a recorded vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lebois. Councillor Norcross?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's quite interesting, councillor Brian Smith, we have a large seniors retirement community to Greenbrier Hill. And when I was speaking to them, they were saying that the community is so unique that there's four or five of them in, in different phases. Yeah, everyone takes a turn putting out the green bin and they all share it. So they don't have to take a green bin to, to the end of the driveway, they just got to walk over their little green bags. But however, just wanted to share that. But election is, sorry, education is imperative. And if we continue to do the education, I think one thing we have to ramp up is that we're telling everybody what they should put in, they can put in, they should be using it. I think we need to include the ramifications. If compliance isn't increased, if it doesn't go from the 47, like if we don't get rid of that 47% and we don't drop it, these, this is going to be the outcome. We will have no choice but to do this because the landfill sites, they're going to be full, they're going to be closed. And so if you take your part and you do what you can, that would be great, but you will lose it if there's not compliance. And I think, you know, if we do that education, make that component part of it. I think when people see that or understand that, wait, there are ramifications that are coming if I don't do this. So I just wanted to share those, those comments, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Greenlaw. And then Warden Clark?
Thank you very much, Chair Dolan. You know, I, great comments by both sides. It's not an easy decision. I, I, I do agree if councillor measures who, who said, culture change is what we have to do. It takes time and education does work, although some people can't be convinced by education alone because they do not listen and they don't want to hear what, what is supposed to be done. No different than speed cameras. How, how many years and decades have we talked about speeding? And some people understand the monetary impacts and, and the consequences. So I think, you know, we need to up the education component to be a little more convincing. And therefore I will support option one. And as councillor Evans also pointed out, if half or more of the people are putting green bins out on the street, the other half are embarrassed. And that's where pure pressure will help us get over the finish line. So I would support option one, and I think we have to up our game in the educational component. And we've done a great job to date. So thank you, Rob, for bringing this back and, and Chair Dolan for deferring it so we could have a full conversation.
Thank you. Clark?
Thank you, Chair Dolan. The first thing I'll point out, we're in committee of the whole, so no, there won't be a recorded vote until it comes to council later in our agenda and we can have the recorded vote then. I will support option one. Now, when I talk to folks on this issue, as soon as you mention any kind of change, they're absolutely opposed. No, we don't want any change. It was the same when we went to the large garbage containers, but now everybody loves them. But when you continue the conversation, should we be trying to reduce our garbage? Absolutely. Should we be trying to get more organics out of the garbage? Absolutely. Should we change? No! It's because people don't like change, but they want to see us move the needle. And I truly believe that. And I'm also a supporter of option five, going to once a month, but I think the time to discuss that is when we're in negotiations with the contractor, when this contract runs out. I don't think now is the time to bring that one to the table. But this is the one that will give us the most bang and move the needle the farthest. So I think that's what folks want to see. They don't want to see change, but they want to see us improve. This is what will improve the most and, and I'm willing to support that option going forward.
Thank you so much, Warden Clark. And then I had councillor Le Duke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I am absolutely opposed to option one. I am status quo, option six. I, I like councillor Snell's idea about reward versus punitive actions. I mean, I can tell you that we did a study after our last change to the waste. We, in Bradford, it equates to four ETFs in our community picking up garbage. Our one resident group went out in one of the wards and picked up over 70 bags of garbage out of ditches and areas that people are just throwing it. We, for a while, had somebody throwing diapers on our eighth line for a long time that we had to go and pick up. It was just, it, it just puts the onus back on us to go pick up garbage. People are not going to be happy. I get it, we want to increase organics. Education is the way to do it. We do it through the schools, the kids will bring that message home to the parents, the parents will finally get embarrassed about doing it and hopefully provide that organics increase that we're looking for. But this is not about our landfill site, it's coming to an end no matter what. In the report, it doesn't tell me how long we're going to extend it by increasing our, our organics by 15 or 20%. That's a great number to save, but it doesn't mean we're going to get that. Penalizing people is not what we're after here. We just, we just create more garbage in our local ditches and things like that. So I can't support option one. I can support option six with the education is already built into that option. So we saved 1.8 million on our garbage contract when it came to organics processing. Let's pass that savings back on to the residents and have them use a reward program that says, if you put your green bin out, you're going to get rewarded for it. We have the capability of doing it, it's just a little extra work. And that's the problem. This, this is an easier solution for everybody to say, let's penalize. It's much easier solution right now. Let's look at a reward program to help our residents to say, yes, we want more organics in our organic spin. I'm an avid user of it. I watch my residents around me, I have lots of calls from people that compost. They, they, they still do use their green bin and it's educational about what can go into composting or not. So to me, it's education, promotion, we will get there. This landfill site is going to be full, we have to deal with this eventually in the future, no matter what we do. Even if we remove 15, 20% more of organics, our landfill site is going to be full. That's why I went to contract. So I can't support option six. It has to be, I can't support option one, it has to be option six for me. And I'm not here to penalize our residents because we've already seen the impacts of making changes to our, our system by having people bring more garbage to the transfer stations. We're getting people paid to bring people's garbage out there and they're actually taking the money and they're dropping the garbage in the ditches. So I have residents around Bradford, West Gwilhambury that actually walk a lot of areas and pick up a lot of garbage and it's our staff that are, they're calling. And it's our staff that are, they're calling our staff and our staff are having to go put that stuff up. So this is just, you know, I want to put, whether we like it or not, garbage is created, organics is created, and we need to deal with it. And I say that option six with better promotion can work for us and we can increase that. We're still a leader throughout Ontario when it comes to diversion. So I support option six.
Thank you, Counselor Bell.
Thank you very much. Well, there's a couple of things I wanted to talk about. I guess first, when this initially came up, I did ask Rob what with savings we would have and what, how we would extend the landfill by implementing this. It it won't extend our landfills at all, not by one day. So this is a lot of work. I I think we're being paid by our residents to to provide a service. Now we're going to tell them we're going to police them, make sure they're doing it right. I just, I can't get there. I think it's just a nightmare. I do want education. I do want to improve it. I do agree with all those things. I just can't get to that point where we're actually policing, and I don't believe for a second it's going to save money. The amount of money it's going to cost to police, the paperwork, administration work, it's going to be a nightmare. So I don't see any cost savings, no landfill savings. I just don't see the benefit of initiating something like this except for it's just going to be all cost to the taxpayer at this point. So I can't, I can't support it.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Friar, and then it looks like we've got some people who want to speak for the second time. Counselor Friar?
Thank you, and and I'm not going to go into a lot of the reasoning. I'm not going to be in support generally for the reason of I can't see penalizing people who are already participating at this point in time. Perhaps when we do get into the negotiations about the about the garbage collection in the future, that would be the time that I could support it, but at this point I can't. And I just wanted to make sure that I I put my position forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miskemings.
Thanks, Chair Dolan, for indulging me. As I've listened to the conversation, I try to think about what what's the root cause here and what are we trying to get at? Is this about participation rates or is it about diversion rates? Because force forcing people to put out that green bin forces the participation rate, doesn't necessarily enforce a diversion rate. And what happens to, you know, people that may choose to bastardize the the principles of why we're doing this? What happens to all that contaminated organics? Does that just create more of a problem for us? So I think the education is the key. And as I, you know, I've heard the conversation around Clearwater with Sagar's salves being seasonal and even Romero for that point. If people do have seasonal residents there, and let's say they're in Richmond Hill, or they're in Toronto, or they're in Mississauga, each of those communities have different rules for organics. So again, I go back to the old, when we were first introducing this in Simcoe. We had these wonderful fridge magnet stickers. Now that might be something passe because everybody has stainless steel and they don't stick. But I think I've still got the magnets on my fridge on the side of it that told you about what went into what. And things have changed since then, and that's, that's what leads to confusion. When we have people dealing with different municipalities and different options as to what can go in there, they get confused. And the easiest way out, as we've said, is is to throw it in the in the regular garbage bin. So we're not changing behaviors. If we're truly about getting that increased diversion rate, then we need to change those behaviors, as been mentioned. And I think educating people on this is is the key. And if we go back to the waste audits that we did where we found that forty six percent of the garbage contained organic material, do we have some common themes on what is, what's being found in in the household wasting? Do we need to rechange and target those items? Because obviously there's a misconception with our residents as to what goes into organics versus what goes into into household waste. So I think we need to relook at this. And again, I'm not supportive of force, forcing our residents to to have their garbage picked up only if a green bin empty, full, full of different materials, that's not even organics in there. I think we're heading in the wrong direction with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Snell.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again, Chair Dolan. Just listening to some of the conversation, I just wanted to to flesh out a little bit of further ideas to my earlier suggestion. I think rather than investing in the technology to monitor whether people are participating to look at a reward system, we could do a collab with the both public, private, and Catholic school systems in throughout the county and do a green bin superhero kind of campaign. Put together a really good five hundred dollar, thousand dollar prize opportunity where, you know, that the teachers support it to the point and are directed by the school board to ask the question on a weekly basis, who's been a green bin superhero this week? And, you know, so that it keeps the conversation going. I also think that from an education piece around the reality of that we don't have space, I don't think that can come through the raccoons. The raccoons are cute and cheerful and and sweet and memorable. But I think it needs to be a stronger, more in-your-face campaign that use it or lose it kind of idea. So I just wanted to sort of put those two out for staff's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Snell. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Chair Dolan. As I said before, I I think that we have to do something. One, I I I do think force always ends up with retaliation. And but I do think that maybe one of the ways that we could get that list out, because we're talking green bin, is by giving a bag. Because one of the things, and I think Counselor Smith had mentioned it too, is the cost of the bags. Yes, they can just put their, I don't know if they can or they can't, but if they put their organics just in there, that would be something that no one would ever want to open. They'd open it once and that would be it. And so they wouldn't be utilizing it that way. But putting that, giving them, somehow giving them bags for their first times or whatever, and a chance to win your bags, but also with that information of what goes in and what doesn't go in on your own, on your own land. Because I think at the end of the day, I think everyone would probably try to do a little bit better. And I do agree with Counselor Snell's with with giving, giving some kind of a prize at the end of the day. Everyone likes, and and a lot of people are competitive. So a competitive of anything is usually a good way to start something. But at the, at the end of the day, we do have to do something and but I do agree that we'll have garbage everywhere if we decide that we're going to penalize. So I will not be able to be able to support it as it's written, but I I agree with it. But I do, I do look at the bigger picture of all the mess that will be left behind. So thank you.
Thank you, Director. Can you just speak to the green bin liners? And what options might be other than the expensive bags?
Certainly through you, Chair Dolan. The there are a number of options. I I will probably be bringing back a report in a couple of years' time just to explain why some programs allow plastic and some programs don't allow plastic. Plastic is never compostable. But some processors, oftentimes things like City of Toronto, who have their own processing for it, can guarantee that their next processing contract can continue to remove that that plastic. We've been in the position that we didn't know where our processor, our long-term processor was going to be until quite recently. So we needed to remain mobile and keep plastic out of the organics. Because once it's in, it's going to be very hard to ever remove that. So that it would have limited the number of locations that we could have taken our material to. The current location we take our material to does accept organics in plastic, although there's a significant surcharge price that's over and above the cost per processing ton right now. The long-term location that we'll be going to in just a couple of years, it's, they're working on up in Dundalk. There's no actual price difference, whether we bring it to them in plastic or compostable bags. So that is something we could consider at that time. So that's something that we'll be looking, thinking about and bringing back to council at some future point. Perhaps it's not too far away from us right now. But that's, that's the real reason for plastic or not plastic. And now I would say, in the old days, going back, you know, five years, when people weren't using your reusable grocery bags, that's what those grocery, plastic grocery bags were mostly used for. I would say that if we allowed plastic, we don't have those plastic grocery bags that most people would use anymore. So they're going to have to be purchasing something. A plastic bag is probably slightly cheaper than a compostable bag. So I I understand the position, but there probably would still have to be a purchase of that. That's why that's out. And while I have the opportunity, there was a question earlier about recycling extra carts. So I I would just note that we do allow up to one extra cart per location. People can just call our our customer service. There's a fifty dollar delivery charge. But we do allow additional carts for recycling and one additional cart for organics as well. Obviously, there's not an additional cart for garbage because we're trying to pull material out from that. But hopefully I've answered your 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 question with regards to the compostable bags.
Yes, you did. Thank you so much. Counselor Gordon.
Thanks. I, much like many of you, have had a deluge of emails and calls primarily from older folks in our community with the concerns that I won't echo again that we've already heard. But one of the, you know, when I was brainstorming with a couple of them, like explaining the circumstances and why we're trying to do this, you know, a few of them, more than one, definitely brought up the fact that they were given these gargantuan garbage cans that are carts that are far larger than what we all used to use for the most part. You know, prior to this, the rollout of the new system, they're very happy with the new system, but maybe the incentive is to, you know, claw back all of those ginormous garbage cans and give everybody the smaller one that isn't an option that that some people have opted to switch to just because they don't have the space in their garage or whatever. But if everyone was presented with a smaller garbage can, there's an incentive to divert right there because you don't have this, you know, cavernous thing that holds like eight bags of garbage that goes out every couple of weeks. So is, Rob, is that being something you consider that, you know, I I get it's an additional cost because we don't know if we have, how much stock we have on these smaller ones? But if we were to roll this out by clawing back the large garbage cans, except for those who expressly need it, or it, you know, say they need it, and just issue everybody the smaller garbage can, that might really help with the uptake without, you know, more of the carrot approach rather than the stick approach that we're being asked to approve today. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. That's something we did look at very closely when we were rolling out the program. We chose the two forty liter, two hundred and forty liter as the normal amount. That's actually smaller than what you'd see in the States. It's, it's it was about thirty-three percent bigger than our current limit, which was one bag every week. So two bags over a of a two-week period. The the two hundred and forty liters considered to be basically a three-bag garbage limit. So that that was discussed with the council at the time. We we did put out that the smaller one was probably what the average household would need. And it was decided at that time that we we needed to consistency. So we went with the two forty. The cart switch was already going to be a big one. Could we do it now? Yes. The cost would be substantial. Those carts that are out there, the two hundred and forty liter carts, if we replace them all with one hundred and twenty liter carts, just the capital cost would be in the neighborhood of seven million dollars. And then the actual car, cost to go around and pick up the old ones and replace them would be over and above that. So it wouldn't be a cheap thing to do. That's for certain.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. So, Rob, now that you've said if someone wants an extra one, and you said it's a fifty dollar delivery, I'm going to get, well, what if I want to pick it up?
Thank you for the question. We don't have that ability. So essentially, it's not at, we we don't supply our sites. We have a central location where we dispatch, store them and dispatch them from. And it basically, it doesn't have staff full time. If you wanted us to increase our staffing, so we had someone there that could do that, we we could look at that, but we don't have the ability.
No, I just, I just knew that someone will ask me that question now that we've heard. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from folks? I I'm just going to add on a couple. So history is told, first of all, we know change is hard, no matter what that change is. But when it's change and it and it includes waste, it's harder. But we've done, we've done it. We've, we've gone from every week garbage to every other week garbage. And if you thought the sky was going to fall, that that was the time the sky was going to fall. And now people are just used to it, and I can't imagine going back to every week garbage after going to every other week. The same when we went to those, when we switched to the cart system. I've never had more calls about anything other than, other than that. And now people love it. The only time we've significantly moved the needle on our diversion rates was when we went to every other week garbage. So will it be hard? Yes. Will people moan and complain? Yes. Will it help? Yes, it will. The only thing that, you know, and I understand it won't move the needle on existing landfill sites, but anybody who lives through Site Forty-One, I know that there is staff that would never even dream of going through that again. So and and then finally, the the piece about penalizing. So like it or not, that's, that's the role we play. We, you get a ticket if you drive too fast or if you go through a red light. You know, if you let your property maintenance standards go awry, somebody's going to clean it up and charge you for it. Like, that's, that's what we do. We we're, we tell everybody how many dogs they can have, you know, how fast they can drive on a road, like, and we tell them what day they put their garbage out and what they can put in their garbage. So, yeah, we have rules. But I think that moving the needle on this isn't going to happen without some significant policy change. And and with that, the, I did get some calls, not as many as it sounds like many of you got. But but one gentleman said, I only put my green bin out every other week. I don't want to drag it out to the curb every week. And I said, you don't have to. Every other week is fine. Because that's how often you put your garbage out. And then again, heard a lot about composting. And as Counselor McDonald said, you know, oh, what do you do with your pet waste? What do you do with bones? What do you do with grease and fat? Those types of things are were really important too. And not only important to the County of Simcoe, but important to our water and wastewater operators because typically that grease, oil, and fat then is going down the drain and not into the garbage bin. So I'll leave it with that and look around if there's any other comments. Seeing none. So I'm going to ask for a mover and a seconder for the motion that's printed in your agenda, unless someone else has an alternative they wanted to put forward. Counselor Rosson, are you moving or did you have a comment?
I'll move it.
Okay, and Counselor Greenlaw is seconding. So this, just to be clear, this, well, I'll read it, and then it'll be truly crystal clear. That item CCW twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-three dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regarding the program to increase organics captured be received. And that option one to implement a program where a garbage cart will only be collected if a resident uses and places their organics cart out for collection starting November first, twenty twenty-five is generally outlined and item CCW twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-three be approved. And that the delivery fee for an organics cart be reduced to twenty-five dollars from October the first, twenty twenty-five until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as generally outlined in CCW twenty twenty-five dash one sixty-three. Comments or questions on that? I had one small change. I would ask the mover and the seconder if they might be inclined to it starting January first, twenty twenty-six as opposed to November first, twenty twenty-five. And I'll give you my rationale. Is that, you know, Christmas is a stressful time. There's lots of people over, lots of company, lots of Christmas parties. You know, having not, not maybe read up on this and not getting your garbage picked up the month of December might be stressful for some folks, and that would give us more time to get, even if we started the process by putting like a little sticker on it saying, as of January first, you know, if you don't have your green bin out, it's not happening. So I'm asking the mover and the seconder if they see any. Counselor Rossin, yes. Counselor Greenlaw, yes. So with an amendment then to January 1, 2026, and I'll just ask Director McCullough if that gives staff heartburn in any way.
Thank you, Chair Dolan. I think it would give our communications department a bit of a heartache. It's very hard to promote something in the weeks before Christmas and New Year's. And with it starting on New Year's Day, essentially, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a message that may be difficult to share with our residents. Simply because of all the different ads that are coming out at that, that time of the year. That is a difficult time to implement a new program January 1 because the amount, because that's when we normally want to step up our public relations with respect to the advertising that we're doing. And there's a lot of noise that time of year that's difficult to break through. That's why we were hoping to look at, you know, November 1 to be able to start that up.
So then assault, a thought then, could you start at November 1, but give leniency through the month of December? Would that be?
Well, that's what we're sort of trying to do with the October sort of soft start where we'd be labeling that. Oh, sorry, November, November, what? No. Sorry, I'm getting confused here. No, November 1 is when the hard start would be. October 1 is when the soft start would sort of be that we would be working then. Is that right? Yeah. And, and so, you know, if you wanted to put it off, I'd say you could probably do February 1. I'm not sure what day of the week. We usually like to start with beginning of a week, but the first full week in February or something, we could put, we could put it off to then and hopefully not get lost in the noise.
I saw Counselor Lavois' hand, but it's gone. Oh, you're, you're good. Okay, Counselor Le Duke?
I'm just not sure about the amendment you're asking for. What's the difference when we start it? If you're gonna be punitive to people, be punitive from day one. So Christmas or not, every year is gonna come around. They're gonna have to deal with it. So I wouldn't support the change. I don't support option one to start or option one to start with. So the timing doesn't matter to me. It's punitive no matter what. So I would leave it as is.
Okay, so we have, we have an amended motion on the floor and we'll call the vote because I don't want to spend an hour or two talking about a start date when we have not got a really good chance of having this go through in the first place. Counselor Greenlaw.
Could you, Madam Chair, clarify the start date for the clerks here?
Yeah, no, I was just, I was looking at the amendment. Are we, are we gonna leave it as is? It sounds, it doesn't make a difference. I'm, I'm fine with making the amendment as you requested, Chair. But also, after hearing from Mr. McCullough, I, I understand his, and I think we need to work with staff with what is practical.
Okay, so we're the mover and the seconder. What's the start date that you want on it? Counselor Rossin?
Just leave the original motion at November 1. I think it's clear.
Okay, so withdrawing the amendment and we're, we're back with the original motion that was on, printed and distributed. So I'm going to call the vote because we're in committee of the whole. So all those in favor of the recommendation?
Madam Chair, I'll just jump in here. There's 29 members in attendance. And so if all the yeses can please hold their hands or cards high up in the air so we can get a count, we need 15 to carry, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm just seeing nine in favor.
Thank you. And those opposed, please hold up your hand or your card.
Madam Chair, that's a majority against.
Thank you. All right, so we'll, do we want to bring up another option or, or just leave it as defeated? Counselor Norcross?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would put option two on the floor. And just tagging on to what Counselor Snell had said, we need to change the messaging and clarify the severity of what's going to happen if we don't make the changes that are required. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. And did you have a seconder, Counselor Norcross, for option two? Counselor Miskimings? And now conversation on option two, Counselor Cox.
I'm good, I'm good for education, but I'm not on that GPS. Is that option two? Sorry, I flipped to the.
Thank you. Director McCullough? Do we need to go into closed session to have this conversation?
I think I can.
No, I just don't. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I think I can start off without going into confidential. I would point out that option two is the targeted promotion education based on the technology aspect that's described and looked at and is very expensive as part of that. If council didn't, only wanted to look at increased promotion education, that's probably option four that doesn't come with the same significant technology price tag that comes along with it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norcross, did you want to make a change?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do. I would, I would change it to option four, please. Like, I don't believe the status quo is working, but I think education is great. And Counselor Miskimings made a really good point. We just don't want people bringing empty green bins to the curb that have nothing in them just so they get their garbage picked up. We want to, we want them to actually be using those green bins. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Snell on option four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would agree with option four. I would just like to add that perhaps if we could request that staff bring back the strategy to council for further conversation in regards to what that education and communication might look like.
Thank you. Did I, I'm sorry, Counselor Norcross, who was your seconder?
I believe it was Counselor Snell or.
Counselor Miskimings.
Miskimings, thank you.
And Counselor Miskimings, are you in favor of switching from option two to option four?
Do you chair? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any other conversations on option four? Counselor Clark, Counselor, Warden Clark?
Thank you. I won't support option four. We did hear Director McCullough say that we will continue with the education that we've been doing all along, and I think we do a good job of promotion. I can't support $380,000 to $570,000 to move the needle from zero to a possible 2%. I don't think it's good value for our money. So I would support the status quo, which, which right now includes education. We will continue to do the education at the level we're at.
Counselor Le Duke?
Yes, I wanted to agree with the warden on that. I mean, option six does have the promotion there also, so I can't agree to option four because it does have an increased cost there that doesn't move the needle enough. I think the education portion is already there in option six, so I support option six.
Thank you, Counselor Cox.
I would like, I would like a report to come back with costing about why it is that high and what's going on. I, if we're gonna leave it at no cost increase, are we still spending $380,000 to $500? So I think we need to report back on the, what Counselor Snell spoke to, what is your plan and the cost? And, and then we can make the decision on it because obviously either four or six means that we're not going to number one. So it doesn't really matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Chair Dolan. Those were my consensus too, also that if we're, if we're going to do everything that they said that number four is doing, we need to know what the difference between that, that dollar value is comparable to the option four. So that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Norcross?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Warden. That's a really good point. If we're doing all the education we can, which is option six, I assume that option four means that we would be increasing the education, we'd be expanding it. So justification and what the difference in education would be between the two options. I agree with Counselor Cox, and maybe that report should come back to council and tell us what the difference is between the two and what more can be done that isn't being done. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director, I'm, I'm asking if it's, if you think it's appropriate then to, if, if this council chooses option four for you to come back with what, a report on what that would look like specifically?
Yes, to you, Madam Chair, that, that's fine. This was an estimate from our communications department. They've done a great number of wonderful sort of ads and workout, but understanding that we spent about half of that amount last year over and above our regular budget and didn't move the needle. They thought we'd need to sort of double that to reach more more hearts and minds in that respect. If council wants an absolute nailed-down plan, we certainly could come back probably in the fall. We'd need to work with our communications department to look at the, the fine measures that would need to be incorporated into that sort of plan.
Thank you. Counselor Snell, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Chair Dolan, and for allowing me to speak again. What I'm thinking is, is maybe some things to consider, Director, when you come back with the communications team, is I think if you, if you create dynamic digital assets that can then be shared through the lower tiers and with commitment through the lower tiers communications teams to, to push it aggressively through all of our resources. I think that would be a cost-efficient way to get some messaging out as well as, again, if we try to activate our schools and engage the students and using some sort of, you know, contract to, to participate that gets shared through the schools and then brought back through the board offices to be picked up versus very laborious efforts of having to run around to schools to pick up. I think there's some creative ways that we could do it to get it more cost-effective, especially to with digital pieces being pushed through phones versus billboards. You know, billboards, they're great, but they're very expensive. So I would love to see what the communications team comes up with for a creative solution in terms of that messaging. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miskimings.
Yes, Roland, through you, just building on Counselor Snell. I think it is about looking at the marketing and education differently. I mean, the ads are great and everything, but they have a limited lifespan. The raccoons have been around for a while, so I just encourage staff to, to come back with something for Council to view that just looks at things differently, different targeted approaches that we can do to get what we want to happen, which is increased diversion. And may I suggest through you, Chair Dolan, a friendly amendment to option four to include a report back to council from staff as to how we would approach it, what the costs are in order to increase the education, the targeted education for the KPIs that we're looking for. Thank you.
So Counselor Miskimings, you're looking for a report back, outline actions for option four?
Through you, Chair, yes, correct.
All right, and did I have a mover and a, yes, I did. I had Counselor Norcross and Counselor Miskimings for that. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Chair Dolan. And sorry, I just had for clarification. So if we're going to do four, are we going to get the report back before we decide to vote on four? Or are we voting on four and then, and then after that to get a report?
My thought was to organize the recommendation to say that staff bring back a report on how option four could be operationalized or like not, not saying, yes, absolutely, we're going for option four, but to see what the costs and the, and the actions going forward were. Director McCullough?
Thank you. I might throw in another option for council's consideration. You could vote on the status quo and we could promise to put option four as a budget item in, in the budget consideration and work out exactly essentially how that would be. And then it would be considered a, a, a budget item for 2026 as how that would be spent.
Thoughts on that? Counselor McDonald?
I, I would agree with Rob McCullough because I like to know what I'm voting on, and I think that's important that we, that that we're all very clear on what it is. And if we do it to budget, we haven't lost anything because Rob's had already said that he can't bring it back into the fall anyway. So I would be in agreeance with that. Thank you.
Counselor Le Duke?
So Mr. McCullough, would this all, would this funding be picked up in your 4% increase in your budget request now that you have? You know, in a report coming soon, you have a 4% increase in there. And you're asking to add this to the 2026 budget. Is this over and above the 4% you've gotten that you're asking for? Or is it going, you're gonna be able to include it in that?
No, this, through you, Madam Chair, this, this would be an increase to our budget.
So Madam Chair, the report is pretty clear. It's pretty clear on what we're doing here. Option four talks about what they're asking for when it comes to more promotional. Option six talks to you about what they're doing and how they're doing the school program and how they're, they're working with a compost candidate to put a book in the library. They're talking about going to media and things like that. I'm not sure why I would pay $300,000 or $500,000 to put more education in the system when they're already doing it. They're just talking about potentially going door-to-door, which is going to be labor costs. That's what we're talking about, hiring people. So not sure I need that. I think it's just a matter of them going back to festivals and doing the education the way they've been doing, get into the schools. That's what we're talking about. Educate the children. They'll educate their parents. So to me, option six does cover all emotional needs. I don't think we need to add this into any budget requirements. So I would stand with option six. We'll get the, we're still second in the province for diversion, for, for diversion rates. So I'm not sure why it's such a true panic here, why we have to spend more money. Education, we already have it in our budget. I'd live with that.
Thank you, Counselor Cox.
I personally would like it to come back just to see what it is. And if there's parts of it we like, we can utilize and it could still be retained in the budget. I think it's a good idea to go back and refresh our education program. Thank you.
Counselor Snell, and then I think we're gonna call the vote.
Thank you again for your indulgence. I agree with Counselor Cox. I think that this should come back to council for us to look at what is the communication plan. I do also agree with Counselor Le Duke that option six, I'd be totally fine with that too, and I'd also be fine with deferring this component. We know that it's been defeated already. Let's defer it, request a report back from staff to council with the marketing strategy, both with using the existing budget and what are options to expand the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Norcross and Counselor Miskimings. Your motions, just finally, what you were going with option six and a report back on option four, was that, is that still standard where you go?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, Counselor Le Duke, thank you for those comments about being number two. But I don't know anybody around this council table that ever wants to come in as number two. Sorry, attempted humor. I'm sure it's not lost on some. Yeah, I, I think we need to look at our options and I think we need to do our due diligence. We're not committing this council to spending $300,000 or $600,000. What we're saying is, what can we look at, what we can do better? And maybe some of the things we're doing now we can remove because they're not working with new strategies. I mean, I, I think the onus is on us is to take a look at every option we have. So if council will indulge, I'd like to see that report come back on what the options are, and we can maybe mix and match and keep the rates the same. Thank you.
I'll, I'll ask the clerk's office if they've been able to follow the bouncing ball, if they've got the recommendation.
Thank you, Chair Dolan. So listening to the conversation, I, I think, and this is subject to the mover and seconder, which is Counselor Norcross and Counselor Miskimings being in agreement to this. It's that the report be received and that staff report back with further details regarding option four outlined in, in item CCW 2025-163 to implement additional promotion and education to the whole county. So what that would do is not approve option four, but Um, so what that would do is not approve option four, but I think what um committee is asking here is for a report back with kind of the details of option four, uh, and allow committee to make a decision on approval of that a future date.
Thank you. Questions or comments on Counselor Norcross?
I'm fine with that. Sorry, Madam Chair, I jumped the gun. I apologize. Please go ahead. Sorry.
No. So you're okay with the way that the clerk expressed that recommendation? I see your seconder is also nodding. Um, Counselor Snell?
Thank you. Just a point of clarification um to the clerk, would that um also include a report or update on what status quo also entails in terms of the marketing and communication strategy? Because personally, I would like to see both. What, what is it we're doing at no increased cost? What are, what, what are some options with an increased cost? Please.
And I, I think we can take that as, as direction, or staff can take that as direction to, you know, outline the difference of what option four would buy you over and above option six. Okay, I'm seeing, oh, Counselor, Warden Clark?
Just a question maybe to Rob McCullough, like, are you able to bring back a report? Because when you read option four in the agenda, it says in order to formulate the plan, y- you need a short program of online phone surveys and select person door to door interviews in order to come up with a plan for promotion. So are you able to bring back options without doing that component? Because that was the suggestion. We do a survey in person and online in order to come up with a marketing program. So are you able to bring back a report without doing that?
Director?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. It, it will be difficult. I, I can certainly take as direction that we would bring back um a report that outlines status quo on basically what we do, how much staff time spent, the sort of hard costs and that. It will be a little difficult on option four. I don't think it will be as specific as council wishes, because we'll probably be relying on some outside creative. And we'll, basically, we'll have to explain that we expect this is how much the outside creative would be, and and uh we, we can describe what we would ask the outside creative for, and I, I think it is more, more like a guerrilla marketing campaign is the way it's uh normally talked about, uh, rather than a straight um promotion uh campaign. We can work with our Communications Department to try and word that in the report, uh, but we won't be able to say we're going to give you diversion man or organic uh, uh, we, we won't be able to do that. That, that will be relied on probably outside creative to um, to do that, uh, and what we would need in support of that. Um, but, but I think, I think it would be helpful so council understands what uh our communications department's talking about in that range, three eighty to see, to five seventy. How much of that's creative? How much would that be in promotions and that type of thing?
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? So I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor? Do you have a count, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, if I could just ask everyone to hold those hands nice and high, please.
I'm counting fifteen.
About fifteen. I count at sixteen, Madam Chair. You can take opposed, perhaps.
Okay, opposed, please. I believe that's carried. Thank you. Uh, any other matters for consideration today? Please say no. Seeing that, I'll pass it back to you, Warden.